The play on snow is not as easy as it seems. I always just assumed it was an easy job to jump in a truck and go, but when I went and rode with them a little bit, let me tell you, it's not an easy job. But we were able to keep definitely the main streets open and always, you know, away to the hospital and Walmart open and all that. And so I'm proud of them. They worked a lot of hours, a lot of stress. And battling that ice for sure was one of the worst actually to try to get off the road that I had ever seen. And we, we actually ended up using twenty, uh, twenty, two hundred ton of salt. And we normally, or we purchased two hundred, we normally purchased one hundred. And we ran out after the first storm. And so we ended up almost double the amount of salt this year as we do now. The county owes me a little bit of that back, but basically we went through almost two hundred ton of salt, which is a lot for us. What that does is it helps in one way and it hurts in another. I've been out looking at streets and potholes and bad spots in the roads appear everywhere from I sixty-four to Main Street in Louisiana. So with that, we've done some cold patching on some of the worst, but we're definitely in the next three weeks to a month will be working hard to try to get potholes patched before we, before they worsen anymore. Also, I didn't have it on the agenda, but I wanted to announce that line, I hope tomorrow for the pool. We, with this year, I'm going to be in need of hiring a full-time manager, a part of, say it right, a manager, assistant manager. Joey, the council member's daughter, was assistant manager last year and she's not coming, she's going to stay at Moorehead College this year. So I've lost both of the managers and will need at least seven lifeguards. So those applications will be on our website tomorrow, the next day. If you all know of anybody that you'd recommend, reach out to them and tell them to apply for a manager position, assistant manager position, or just a lifeguard position. We're very fortunate to have them because many of the pools around us don't open because they can't find lifeguards.
Is that on the city's website?
It will be tomorrow or next.
Okay.
Yeah. Old business would be the only thing to approve the minutes of the February eleventh meeting, which included the packet. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chatham.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Farley. Any questions or concerns, corrections on the minutes? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye. He's reviewed it and of course he'd have to step out right during the time, but I don't know if he had any questions or not. But Rita, I don't think you got the price in here, do we?
Uh, I'm not sure if, I think we sent them the contract, but I don't know if we sent all the other stuff that went with it.
It says the number of payments.
You got it?
It's two ninety-one sixty for thirty-six months with a one dollar buyout. That's for two machines and the printer.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a printer for, so the water company would be paying about heights of that. We'd be paying about heights of about a hundred fifty dollars a month. The ones we have now.
They were on a five-year lease and that expired back in October, I believe. So you all actually didn't still making payments on those until we redone this. The former salesman who's no longer with us that started that. But what this does, this just takes place of that and I say, Joel, in, in the, in the lease, in the contract agreement, with our conversations, I'm giving you thirty-six months free service. Really, all you're going to be paying for is the toner and an imaging unit if it ever goes out. Toners are forty-six thousand copies and an image unit is a hundred and fifty thousand copies. So you all only done a hundred and sixty-six thousand copies on the, on the clerk's printer, which averages, I think, right around, you know, thirty-seven thousand pages a year. So I think with what I've gave in this new contract, you all might not ever need anything. And the contract only covers the machine. In our discussions, you know, if you all have a power outage and the computers go down, then that's not a machine malfunction, that's the computers not attaching to the copier again that either your IT person or, you know, if we had to send somebody up, there would be a charge. But if the machine breaks, it's all on Ashland Office Supply.
Bud, we sent you over the lease agreement on.
Yeah, I looked at it. It's boilerplate. You know, legally you can, I think we can sign it. There's no impediment. I always look at contracts that go beyond the term of the council, but I think this is going to be okay. Although it does go beyond the term of the council.
Set up initially, that's going to be you all.
Pardon?
Set up initially, initial setup.
Yes.
Bringing it, setting it up, including on the network.
Yes, providing for our conversation if, if they'll talk to each other. If you recall our conversation, the emails didn't work because of the software. But my guys will come up, they will install all three machines and try to get it to hook up your old.
Well, I don't get that because that's what we've experienced with this one. It worked, then we switched to foothills and it wasn't work.
And in our discussion, I told you I had that with another customer here in Louisiana also that had the same problems.
And where that leaves us is sitting here. Now, I mean, obviously it's something that council understands. All I'm talking about is the ability to lay something on it, scan it and send it via email from the copier used to work. Once footh, once foothills come on board, nobody's ever been able to fix it.
I'm hoping it works fine. We have fixed the problem at the other location here in town. But it's, it's about, about the same machine. So we're hoping that's, that's what it is.
So if that would happen, you're saying you will take care of the issue or you.
We will work the issue as long as we can until it becomes a foothills issue. Ashland Supply can only do so much with the machine. Again, it's, it's an outside, outside situation. If the machine works great, then the machine is good. If your computers don't have enough memory, if computers that, then that's not a machine issue.
Well, it's not that. It's not a memory issue.
Right, but that was, it, it, it's a foothills issue. We've had that troubles before, but we, we believe we've got it fixed at the other one. And our guys have not been back up to look at these since we fixed that one, which was in November of last year, I believe, ma'am.
So if errors go down, we call Ashland Office Supply and will you troubleshoot it or?
Yes, ma'am. We will send a computer technician up here to fix it.
That's part of our.
No, no, I'm sorry. I just, I must have misspoke. If it's a computer issue, it is not a Ashland Supply issue. We can send somebody up to work on it, but it will cost.
But how do we know that it's, you don't, do you have initial support? Like I call up and I say, hey, this isn't working, you troubleshoot it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that part of their agreement?
Yes, ma'am. I will make that part of the agreement.
Because, you know, I'm, I'm in a business and I call, text support and they'll say, oh, it's your drivers or call your IT guy. It's not. So you get in that situation, whose responsibilities? But I feel that you all's responsibility should be initially to check your machine and see what it is. But if that's not part of the contract, that's why I was a little confused.
When they bring it up, they check on that, but at any time, the clerk will be able to call, I will give her the name and the phone number.
She'll have a rep that we call, this is their rep, and this is part of their service agreement. This is part of our agreement that we're signing. Yes or no?
In, in the initial phases, now.
What happens three months down the road?
If it's, if it's an issue again with the, the computers or something, we don't have that answer today, ma'am. I'm sorry.
But it's not the computers.
Okay.
What kind of support are you giving us?
We will give you any answer that you need, but the problem is if it's not the, if it's not the copier that's having the problem and it's yours computers or your fax line or something to that nature, it is not the machine itself.
I know, I'm just saying, if I call you and say it's down, you're going to troubleshoot it to let us know where that problem is?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. You will support that.
I will support that.
I mean, I don't expect you to support the computer and the foothills, but I would expect you to, when I call, say, hey, what's this problem? And you can go in there or send somebody and say, oh, well, it's this, but then it could be that and you need an IT guy. I just want to know what kind of service we're going to get and not be charged every time. I would think the contract, we would have X amount of time.
You will have a leadway.
I, I won't, I won't. Steve sent some guys over here and fixed it and made it work. Then when Lockhart left and foothills come, it's never worked since and nobody.
Foothills don't have an office here now.
Nobody that I've been able to get to Ashland can figure out what.
It's got something to do with the IT address or something to that effect. Travis, I think his name's Travis, used to work for Lockhart and he came over and troubleshooted and he'll figure out what was wrong with it. Cause it done the same thing.
Yeah.
But when we went to foothills, they've never been able to figure it out.
So, and it's not the end of the world.
It works. We just can't.
We have to go around and about. She has to scan something to the folder on her computer and then email it to me so I can email it to somebody else. When it's much better if I can say, Rita, email this to this and scan and you send it straight to me or to Bud. If you are someone to make a motion, we, since it is a contract. Like I said, we do have, we've been budgeted for it. It's just it's a new contract and that's what I bring to you all.
Is the price the same as the old contract or what was the payment on that other one?
It's a little less, not much, a little less. Our monthly payment is a little less. I think it's one seventy-seven, is that sound right?
I'm not sure. I don't have that information.
Mine's one and in tennies is a different one because hers is, is color. Like mine's like one seventy-seven and nothing. Hers is two maybe or two twenty, around that area. So it's a little less. And I'm also getting another printer that I don't have right now. We had an excess printer that we bought years ago when we got United Systems that was for only our checks and it quit working. So I had to use the big one and it's kind of risky because you never know when a fax is going to come through when you're printing checks. And it's only happened once, thank God. But yeah, and he's, he is providing that. So we're getting a little more better of a deal.
Yes, the previous lease was two oh-two forty-six and one seventy-seven fifty-five.
I have a motion by Mr. Rowe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Chatham. Any more questions? All in favor, see if I'm saying aye. Any opposed? West Virginia actually is having massive problems with water. And Fort Gay has been having not as bad a problems, but the new administration feels like that they are, we know that their water plant is extremely old, not been updated, old technology. It only costs a lot to fix. They're having trouble finding and keeping operators, as a lot of people are, as you know, Jasper. And so with the new mayor, the discussion just happened about to, that they was going to look at other ways to get water other than keeping their plant. Not to say that they definitely would, but they was going to explore. So I saw that and it dawned on me in the middle of the night one night. For you all that's not on the Caleb knows this because it's on the utility board, but for the others, the city of Louisiana is pretty much surrounded by other water districts to where we can't really grow anymore. Big Sandy is all around us. So we make the water, we sell it wholesale to Big Sandy. But Big Sandy is providing the service to all the citizens around the city. We go outside the city a little bit, but I mean, where we currently have is all we will ever have because we're surrounded. We can't grow no further. So it dawned on me, one way that we might grow customers would be to jump across the river and, and do business with those folks if it was a good deal for all of us. So that prompted me to at least run the idea across the utility board's minds to see what they're, because they're involved deeply in the water and planning and to see what they thought. And if they thought it would be at least an idea for me to meet with the mayor and to throw these ideas around. And so I did to see if they had interest. Well, they, they do have interest. And so then they had a meeting. And they're looking at a couple of options. Crum is having a serious water issue right now, serious. And so they buy their water from Kermit, which is Mingle County. So the, the things they're looking at would be, there's some group, a group that would like to build a new water plant over there, somewhere between Crum and Fort Gay. And Fort Gay buy all the water from that water plant and Crum buy all the water from that water plant. I think it's, it seems like, you know, it's a, it's just up in the air whether funding could ever be due to the amount of customers and so forth. Anyways, Fort Gay has experienced interest to me, hoping that their, their city council, that they would like to at least pursue the next step. So before I do any, this has all happened in two to three weeks. So before I do anything else, I wanted our city council to give it a thought, as the utility board did, before I do anything else to say, is that something the city of Louisiana would be open to looking at or not? And if the answer is not, I don't want to do anything else. If the answer is yes, here's what I think we do next. Two things. One, there's, there's a grant through Appalachian region. I don't know that we have a cap, Cody. I'd have to check, but I can't remember either. But I know in our contract with Big Sandy, there's a daily or monthly, whatever amount of water. We agree to sell you this many gallons at this price. Anything over that, I can say no. Our contract says we're selling a million and you're done to, you know.
South Shore has a similar.
But it's obvious that anybody's not going to, I can't imagine anyone ignoring rates for long because it's going to be.
South Shore has a similar agreement with Portsmouth where South Shore can only draw up to two million. And after that, they need to renegotiate their contract.
Exactly. It's like, it's kind of the way ours is written with Big Sandy.
But we're in that Big Sandy that we can't raise. I mean, that's.
No, we can raise. It's just Public Service Commission has to approve your rates.
But city people are paying more than the county people on Big Sandy. Their rate or.
I don't know what Big Sandy's charging them.
I know back when I first got canceled, we were looking into it. I know our city rate was more, because I mean, people gruffing and complaining about it more than Big Sandy's rate. So it would be comparable to what we're paying our city rates?
No, there's no way you can do that. There's no way Fort Gay could buy from you at a retail price and then keep up their tanks and lines and pay their people and sell it back. Their customers would be paying. No, there's no way possible.
So what we pay to Big Sandy is less than what you were out paying for water on the gallon.
Yeah, they don't pay as much as we pay on.
But we, but we don't have any responsibility.
Right. You're just giving them water and they're distributing it.
See, with the, with the city folks, we're taking care of all the lines.
Yeah, I know.
And.
Yeah, and water bill reflects it.
And, and Big Sandy, they're taking care of all the lines and tanks.
But their rate's cheaper than ours.
You mean the rate that Big Sandy charges their customers, you mean?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. That's what she's asking.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know what they.
I don't know what they charge their customers. You can see it on there. Hold on.
But I can check on all this stuff.
But you got, you got to remember, a lot of times our bill, our bills are high, but a lot of times people forget that that's water, silver and trash on one bill. And most other places don't have that.
Is it just unlimited until they come up with a better solution? Or are we talking ten years or a hundred year agreement? What kind of?
Typically those agreements run in ten to twenty year range.
Pretty long time.
Yeah, I think our last one with Big Sandy was five.
They would, they would kind of be put in a position where that's their best option if it, if it was already running like that. Because at least now, if you go to build a new treatment plant today, you're looking at tens of millions of dollars even for a very small plant.
Their, their price tag is sixteen million. I'd be surprised if they could do it for that.
I'd, I'd be surprised.
Then how many years it would take to get that project planned and approved and funded? They couldn't even start to build a plant for five or six years.
That's why Fort Gay's living in the house.
That would, that would be over, what, forty years, something like that, depending on what, what source they.
Really, running the line under the river is not that big a deal.
Yeah.
Quick.
I would, I would like to see what West Virginia state would say. Cause if, if they were going to build a plant down there that was going to service a couple of those little small towns and outline areas down there, even if they're serving up to Kermit, that's a lot of distribution lines and that's a lot of different entities involved. Like they basically need to form a regional commission of some kind. Been pretty complicated solution.
It, they tend, they tend to stick within their county boundaries over there. They have a, well, they have a Crum Public Service District. And then Kermit's part of Mingle County Public Service District. And then Fort Gay's a municipality on its own. And so the good thing about us and Fort Gay, we both be municipalities and it's Fort. I don't know about over there, over here, we're not subject to Public Service Commission. I assume they're not in West Virginia either.
It just depends. I know American Water is, I think it's.
Well, they're probably, they're not municipality.
Yeah, I think it's kind of a similar thing. Like if you're here, if you're a regional, not a, visiting municipalities, you know.
Yeah.
It's like, you know.
So you would be just dealing with two cities, dealing with each other, not so much through Public Service Commission, I think.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I, if you want my, I think it's a good idea to look further. And of course, before we leaked, we need more details, cost, couldn't we get a grant or not? You know, what the cost would be to Fort Gay and.
Potential revenue.
Potential revenue for us, which, you know, you can just do the math on that. It's, it's not bad.
Can I say something just being here for as long? We regretted not expanding into the places that Big Sandy is providing water from now as, as the city in a whole, just because there is a whole lot more customers base than people thought there was. And now we're pretty much tied. We can't move, go no further.
And you know, there's not many lines, Jasper, with the capacity we have.
Yeah, I'd say if, if you didn't have the official customers, it, it would benefit in case something happened to the plant because there's a lot more people that have the base to replace it again.
More, yeah. And also the plant, when it was designed, our plant's only twenty years old and it's lacking. I mean, honestly, if you go look at it, they've taken good care of it.
Thirty, forty years on it, receding.
And we did a million dollar upgrade a couple of years ago. All the technology's up to date. Everything's up to date. And they built the plant with the idea that if they ever wanted to expand above three million, all they got to do is set in another actifuge. The filter's there for, to go to four point five million with just another actifuge. So even if you ever got to the three million a gallon a day point, it's not that big a deal for us to increase to four point five. So it seemed to me like it, it's, it's kind of like, it's, it's math thing. It's kind of like the Big Sandy thing. If you look at it like Rowe just talked about, we're selling them a lot cheaper. If you see how much water they buy from us and you deduct that revenue out of us, it hurts back. I mean, you couldn't, you couldn't sell water to the city customers for what we do now. You'd have to raise it even more if you wanted to sell them to them also.
I think it's worth it too, just to repair that, the point section line and then, like you said, the line under the rivers. However, thirty-five years old, so if it doesn't get fixed now with hopefully grant money from another project, then in ten years, we're fixing it with our own money.
Yeah, I agree. So if you all would at least consider letting me continue on talking with the mayor over there. I just didn't want to do any more without you all being involved. And this has all been done since, but I did run it through the water for utility.
So you need a motion from?
Yeah, I would just like a motion saying you all authorized me to continue to investigate the situation and to bring back to you more facts, figures and, and if and when the grant opened up. And we may even want to try to get a little preliminary engineering work done by somebody that, that gives us some better hands-on deal for it.
Well, I make that motion that we authorize the mayor of Louisiana to investigate options and requirements to provide water to the city of Fort Gay, West Virginia. You know, a motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowe. Do you have a question?
I did have one quick question.
Okay.
So like with the situation on the point section where we said, you know, no more taps, we can't supply that. I know we would have like a max amount that we would sell to them. Say some subdivision comes in, they start adding in a whole bunch of their taps. They get to that limit. Are we going to have any kind of say, like if it gets to the point where we can't provide more water than that? Or would it just be renegotiate to try and sell more to you, if that makes sense?
I would think that if we said we'll sell you, how much is six hundred thousand a gallon in time of thirty days? One, one eight million and so. We, we said we'll sell you two million gallons a month at this price. And then that Fort Gay got into some, I can't see growth.
I can get a bit of hypothetic, if something happens.
If it did, then it's going to be more than two million. Then we got to come back to the table and renegotiate price, gallons, because we would have to adjust the plan. We'd have to run more hours a day. It would cost more of that. So you do have, we do have some protection too, to, to say, no, hold on. I told you we was going to say two million, not twenty million, you know. Makes sense. And I, you know, I, another problem over there, and I don't want to say too much more. It sounds like I'm being negative to them. I'm not at all. I want to try to help them if I can. But they don't have a lot of businesses to use a lot of water at this point. And unless that were to change, when they look at, when they look at two thousand customers, there ain't no hospitals and schools and Walmarts and restaurants use a lot of water in our town. You wouldn't believe what restaurants use. There are none. So their consumption is not there at this point.
That's, they used to be everything.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Not now.
I know. So anyway, like I told them, I felt like it was too bold. I felt like that they're our neighbors. They do business with us. They eat with us and use our hospitals and doctors. They're part of our economy. And if they're without water and we can help them and it helps us in return, I just feel like it's a good thing all the way around. All right. I had a motion in a second. All in favor, see if I'm saying aye. Any opposed? All right. As we start the year, is go ahead and, I know the county does it in the spring. For whatever reason, the last couple of years, I was late doing it and I wanted to get ahead of the game this year. I'd like to go ahead and advertise for blacktop. So you all just be authorizing me place ad in the paper that says, we're seeking bids for the lowest bidder for asphalt, both picked up at the plant and so many miles in Louisiana and laid in place, including milling and whatever like we did last year. And I feel like right now, this time of year, all blacktop places are preparing bids for the counties and stuff. So we'll get more attention and like last year, I didn't follow, well, they're already all booked up anyway. They ain't looking for business. I feel like it's the appropriate time to do it. I have a motion.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Farley, on favor.
Aye.
And on contract, which was bought in sixteen, when I first come in as mayor. And of everything we got at the city, what wears out the quickest is the bureaucracy. And I talked to other cities and mayors and they, they all say the same thing. It's just a constant move. It's just a constant moving, working, garbage, yuck, but, I mean, it's just brute force of those things. And the trouble of it is, you just can't afford to formally down it. So we, uh, we finally were to the point where like, we can sell a truck and get good money out of one, because they're not plum war, plum out. There's enough life for somebody to get from that. So I say that to say this. I've gotten four quotes, five quotes, only two are in the specs that we want, and I never realized, I mean, it's like, it's almost impossible to get one. Loadmaster makes the bodies that we've used the last ten years. Right now, if we order a loadmaster body, three hundred days. Get it built. So you gotta buy chassis, and keep that chassis three hundred days for it to get them to put a loadmaster body on. It's just, it's crazy. So I say that to say this, I'm still looking. I got five quotes, of the five quotes, three of them don't meet the specification we need here in the mountains. We, we got to have the right horsepower and the right size transmission, and the right capacity of truck or you're just an impiggle. And the last two trucks we've had are, uh, I'm not a truck person. One of y'all may know what kind of engine they're in. They're freighters. That's it. They're freight liners, and the only place we give them serviced is over in West Virginia, and we do not like it. They, they just, it's like, they don't want to work on them, and we don't like to take them over. It's just a hassle. So we've been taking them to Louisville or Charleston to get work. This time, if we buy a Mike or Peterbilt or something else, that we can get serviced up here in town.
I'm going to say that's where you want it.
So give me another two, three weeks to find the right truck, and I'm also trying to find it on a state contract or Sourcewell Nationwide contract, so we don't have to do this bidding process. And I'll have to, I'll get all that to Bud. He'll have to have a contract number. So I'm working on it, but I will tell you this. No new truck that capacity that I've seen has been less than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I believe it was two twenty-nine or something, and now we're two eighty.
Yeah, I know that's it.
So. It's, and I start looking at, that's going to mean we've got almost a half million dollar loans tied up in court, in two courts, some legal. Uh, but I will, I will give that to you as soon as I can. And also, I've looked at Kentucky League of Cities does financing, so I'm looking at them as a potential quote for the new one. And, uh, when I looked up government financing online, whatever reason, they say that Kentucky Farmers Bank down here does it. And I reached out to them, so I'm going to talk to them and Kentucky League of Cities. And if trust, they're called me back, but I don't think it's going to. Uh, can't make it. If you're not interested, uh, or whatever of that nature, it's no big deal. It's just, I know some are newer and some are new, very new. And I wanted to take the time, not tied up during a council meeting and tying up everybody else's time, to sit here, obviously it's not behind closed doors, it's open to the public, but we can sit here and get down there and sit around the table and crunch numbers. I want to go over with you some ideas I have for this year with parks and other things that will be put in the budget. Listen to ideas you might have that we need to put in the budget and work on the budget. That will give us a preliminary starting point to work with, then I'll go back and pile all the numbers with the payroll and all that, and bring it back to you. Hopefully have it back to you in, in April, and if not April, May. But we would have to have a first reading in May, a second reading in June to get it approved by the time we need approval in July.
Yeah.
Will you get off at time?
You can get up there.
We won't be late that way. Five o'clock, Wednesday, or Tuesday, March eighteenth, five o'clock, here around that table. Uh, don't, certainly not mandatory if you can't make it. It's not a big deal. There'll be nothing done. There'll be no, uh, official action taken on either. It's just a planning session. Any questions on that? And if not, maybe if you all want to be looking at that, then resemble what we're working on next year. Any council comments?
We have our water management council meeting on Monday.
Let me take this second. I apologize. I always introduce Bryson, and I forgot tonight. It's used to Bryson, and you're new. Uh, Jasper Ball works with Five Co. Area Development District, and he's over specifically the water management portion of it, which helps us with grant funding for SRF, helps us do the project profiles with the state system, and just does overall regional planning for water and wastewater in the Five Co. Region. And so thank you for coming up tonight. Uh, you said the water management council meeting Monday?
Monday at ten.
Yeah. I'll be, I'll be there at, at five o'clock.
Glad to have you.
Great, uh, enjoy South Eastern Conference Basketball Week this week. Was glad that they didn't start.